Okay, it's 5:30 and it's Monday, May 18th, 2015. And I call at Potter County Commissioners Court. This is a notice of public hearing on the implementation of a countywide polling place program pursuant to Texas Election Code, Section 43007B, countywide polling place program. Potter County Commissioners Court will hold a public hearing to discuss possibility of the county's implementation of the countywide program. So I'll open the floor for discussion. I have several letters here of support that I'm assuming you want me to read all of them?
Yes. Well, no, not all of them.
Okay.
We want to go home tonight.
Thank you. This is from Tanya Dedden. She is the Republican Chair for Potter County. Dear Judge Tanner and County Commissioners, on behalf of the Republican Party of Potter County, I support the proposal for Potter County vote centers. Potter County Elections Office has been extremely open, thoughtful, and transparent in developing the proposal, proposed rules, and the proposed vote center locations. Please relay our support when you submit the application to the Texas Secretary of State's office. Thank you for your consideration. That's one. I have another one from the Democrat. Two. Nope. I thought I had it up here.
That didn't have that competition issue.
This is from Gingerie Powell, the Democrat Party Chair. Dear Secretary of State, as Chairman of the Democratic Party for Potter County, I support the use of vote centers in our county. We worked together to create a plan that I believe benefits the voters of all parties. This plan was developed by multiple community leaders and offers more convenient voting for our citizens. I encourage the Election Division to approve the use of vote centers for election days in Potter County. So that's from both Democratic and Republican Chairs. I have numerous more in support. I suppose if I have anybody who's opposed to it, you have three minutes.
Well, do you want me to do a dissesion?
Of course.
Okay. Thank you. Just kind of wanted to go over with everybody who attended tonight how we arrived at the proposal we're going to be sending to the state of Texas.
Hello?
Okay. One over here. To begin with, vote centers, and a lot of these are quotes from other places, basically what a vote center is, is an alternative to traditional neighborhood-based precinct voting. It's like adding another day of early voting. What it will do for Potter County is, on election day, a voter, instead of having one place where that voter can go to vote on election day, that voter will have 16 choices, which we believe will add a lot of convenience for our voters and make voting much easier and more accessible. This is kind of becoming the new model around the nation. In fact, at the federal level, there is a bill that is going to, well, if it passes, would encourage all states to adopt vote centers as the model for voting in the future. It really comes about because we are now a mobile-based society. We're not in our little neighborhoods. We work someplace else. We shop someplace else. We recreate someplace else. And so the idea around vote centers is to relocate all of our polling locations so that we catch people on the way to other places. Advantages are obviously convenience. There is a potential for savings over time. Turnout, it could increase, although what we've talked to others who are currently using this, and turnout has remained consistent. What seems to be to drive turnout is more tied to interest in the election and the issues rather than necessarily vote centers in and of themselves. It decreases provisional ballots, and the provisional ballots are decreased because if you're in the right county, you're in the right place to vote. So we don't end up with so many provisional ballots that end up not counting because you didn't go to the right place. And also, it helps us improve poll worker recruitment by allowing us to just use our top people. Challenges, obviously, is a challenge to tradition and the person who is used to going just in their neighborhood. A lot of that is just going to be education. And again, that's a challenge that we will be addressing in this program. And then transportation. If somebody is just used to just their neighborhood, I believe we've located all these where it still will not be problematic for anyone to get to any location. One of the requirements is that we have equipment that communicates with other equipment so that we can prevent voters from voting more than once by going, you know, on the same day since it's all open. We had to prove that we can do that, and you have to have the Wi-Fi connectivity with everything. So. Regionally, between 30 and 50% of the voters that show up to vote at a vote center are not voting in the location as closest to their home, which again, that kind of shows the need to make it more convenient. You have somebody that works at the prison, for example, but lives in West Amarillo, it's difficult for them to get from work to a polling place, and a lot of times, voting is the last thing they want to do at the end of the shift. Potter County, because of vote centers, they were allowed, able to add two workers to one of their sites that was in sign language. And the stories that they tell about a person who voted for the first time that was never shown up before because of just the troubles of it, I mean, it's just a really touching story to realize that you accommodate voters more personally using the vote centers. They also, their provisional ballots drop by 85% the first major election using the vote centers. Randall County reported that vote centers didn't significantly impact voter turnout either way. It still depends on what is on the ballot. There's been no partisan shift. They've received only positive feedback from both parties, and their continued support in favor of the vote centers. And in their first survey, they did an exit survey the first time that they used vote centers, and 97% of the voters said that they liked them and they felt like it was more convenient. So what we did here is we established a vote center committee to lead this charge, to decide if it was even something that we wanted to pursue. We then established a vote center advisory committee made up of a lot of our community entities and leaders that would be involved in elections. We held four JP precincts, smaller meetings, in order to get input from residents and neighborhoods because when we were looking at different addresses and didn't know all of the traffic patterns and what people thought of various voting locations that had been suggested, we wanted to hear from the folks that would be most likely to use those. And then, of course, today we're having the public hearing. The vote center committee represented, had representatives from political subdivisions, minority interest groups, disability interest groups, community groups, and political parties. They set the criteria for the vote centers, scouted Potter County for potential sites, developed a communication plan, and recommended the final sites. As far as their criteria, one thing we were looking at was not just ADA compatible, but ADA friendly. And there were several places that we found that they were compatible, but not necessarily what we would want for our voters because they weren't easy to use. We wanted a space that would accommodate and still allow for privacy, available parking, paved and lighted, close to the major traffic areas. And on those traffic areas, we got the 30 top intersections in Potter County, and we mapped them so that we could see where we needed to be if we were going to catch people on their way somewhere. We wanted non-smoking facilities, no alcohol that would be consumed on the premises, sites that were known to residents, places where the voter would feel comfortable and welcome. Obviously, electrical outlets were a must. We wanted different types of locations, so they weren't all one thing. You'll see, as you look here, that we have churches, we have government buildings, we have retail, and we have some nonprofits. And we wanted sites that wanted us, and I know it was really surprising, I thought everybody would want us. But when you look at it, you know, you say, hey, it's 6:00 a.m., who's going to meet us? They go, oh, well, maybe we'll pass. So how we got to the sweet 16 locations that we're talking about today is the vote center advisory committee scouted Potter County, and we had actually a little bit over 120 sites that were recommended. From then, our office looked at it, and really about 65 of those sites met the criteria. And so we cut that, the vote center committee cut it down to about 30. And from there, we went out and we actually went to site visits. We took votes from the IT department so we could check the Wi-Fi connections to make sure that they would be adequate. We mapped the rooms for how we would set up the furniture. We mapped them on a big map to make sure that we were covering the county equitably. And really, just kind of went over the criteria for all of that, and the vote center committee got back together, and we came up magically with our 16. This is a map of the 13 of the 16. And the three that are not on there, one is in Buschlin, one is River Road, and one is Highland Park. What you're seeing there is basically the interior of, I meant, sorry, Valley de Oro, Buschlin, and Highland Park. And what you're seeing there is basically the interior of Potter County where our most populated areas are. You can also see, if you're looking at that, the pink area are JP1, the orange area is JP4, the green area is JP2, and the blue is JP3. And it's really kind of, I'm going to be talking about where they're located, but it's kind of embarrassing to even say that we are, talking about the JPs we're in, because we're really supposed to be looking at this as globally and not going back to our siloed neighborhoods. So in some cases, there may be one that's located in one JP, but it's just across the line from the other. So they really do cross over. The sites that have been recommended for JP1 are the Cash Saver Plus at I-40 and Bell, T2Go at I-40 and Western, and Bazula Furniture at I-40 in Washington. In JP2, we have Wesley Community Center on Roberts. We have Emerald Auto Supply and Off-Road at Emerald Boulevard and Grand, and we have Kids Incorporated at 27th and Osage. In JP3, you're going to see more sites, and that has as much to do with the geography of the JP3. We've got to serve our rural areas in the same way that we currently are. So we're going to have a place at Valley de Oro Fire Station. If you look at it, there's only about 200 voters registered there, but they would have to travel way too far if we don't open that up. It will be a vote center, complete with Wi-Fi, so if someone is headed down the road and they're going to Boys Ranch or going to the mountains, and they suddenly realize they forgot to vote, they can wheel in there and vote on their way. But we have Hillside Church, Emerald Northwest on Tascosa Road, Coffee Memorial Blood Center, First Baptist Church in Buschlin, Valley de Oro Fire Station, Shakerl Hills Church, Lighthouse Baptist Church, and Highland Park ISD Admin Building. In JP4, we have Second Baptist Church, St. John Baptist, and Pride Home Center. And St. John Baptist is probably the only one that's really not on a major thoroughfare, but when we talk to the folks that live and work around that area, they love it. They said we'd like to keep it there, and so we're going to at least give it a shot. So that means we're using two government facilities, six churches, three nonprofits, and five retails. Along with this, the vote center advisory committee recommended that we evaluate and scout to see if we can improve our early voting sites. So those were also inspected, and we recommend four locations. Our main site will always be the Santa Fe building. Then JP1, we'll have Donut Stop at I-40 in Georgia. JP2, we're looking at United Amigos, I-40 and Grand. JP3, Coffee Memorial Blood Center on Wallace. And JP4, Cornerstone Outreach on Buchanan. And we actually tested Cornerstone during this last election and received two calls from folks that said they loved having it there, it was convenient, they felt like it was in the right location, and they just thanked us for being there. One of the changes, or one of the challenges as we move to vote centers is how do you decide who's going to be the judge and the alternate judge in a vote center? Because in a precinct, you know, it is actually said in Texas Election Code, if you're precinct-based, that the, in the precinct, however they voted for the governor, that party of that, whoever wins the governorship gets to be the judge, assign somebody for the judge, and the person who's second gets to be the alternate judge. But you get to a vote center situation, and you have several choices. So we have agreed to do the proportional method, which means that Potter County Party Chairs, County Judges, Commissioners agree to appoint vote center judges on a proportional basis that reverence sent the voters of an individual justice of the peace precinct. So we'll look at the justice of the peace totals in their total, and you figure out the percentage. So, and I'm just going to flip down here. As an example, in JP1 in November, 80% of the voters voted for Greg Abbott. So, and he represents the Republican Party, so in JP1, 80% of the judges in a vote center situation will come from the Republican Party, or 20% will come from the Democratic Party. It wasn't actually 80% because we took the third and fourth parties, the Green and the Libertarian, and took the spoils with the victory, or to the victory, whichever, however that goes. Basically, they got to pick up what the third and fourth party totals were. So you look at that, and in JP2, we've got a 69%, 31% is the balance in JP2. You go to JP3, and it's 86-14, and you go to JP4, and following the election in November, it was 52% Republican and 48% Democrat. For communications, I think communications is the biggest challenge to this because our voters must know of the change, and they need to know where they can go. One thing is we have a brand-new website, PotterCountyVotes.com, and I'm going to show you a cool thing on it in a little bit. There will be signage at previous locations. We're counting on the news media, thank you very much, to help us get the message out when we get to this point. We're going to want the news stations, radio, morning shows, newspaper, you know, everybody that can do something, we're looking for help. Also, we can be willing to go out and talk to just about anyone. So town hall meetings, retirement centers, NAACP, Rotary Club, churches, Republican Women, Potter County Democrats, whoever invites us, we're probably going to be there with our little dog and pony show. We want to provide a PDF to churches that they can print and add to their bulletins if they're interested. We will be looking at free email blasts from DJ's Blast, from United Way, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Amarillo Chamber of Commerce, City of Amarillo. We'll be asking media to put a link to our website so that people can get the information. Of course, we'll be using Facebook and Peach Star is how they distribute flyers at AIS. Rather than printing everything out, they do an eThing, and it saves paper, it gets sent to homes. Sometimes kids don't take things home from school, I'm told. We will have at least, you know, one to two 12-foot flags at each new location. We want to print 24 by 18 signs and line the streets that say Potter County Votes Here at a new site, just to draw as much attention to it as possible. Our sample ballot online system from ESNS will help direct a lot of the voters. There'll be posters in the buildings with large employment and retail areas. We're talking about producing a 10-second ad and asking the stations to run it when they sync up with their national feeds at the top of the hour. And we will be mailing postcards to each household with an active registered voter, and that's at a cost of about $10,000. That is our most expensive thing. Everything else is pretty affordable.
If I remember right, you told us that that was a cost that we had to do.
Is required.
Required.
That is a requirement, yes. And it's actually budgeted into this year, so if we get approval for this, I want to mail it September 30th so I can get it into this budget year. One of the challenges that you hear from other folks that have had vote centers is they're concerned about the length of line, and there's a tendency for the voters to all go to one place, and that's going to be one of, that will be one of our challenges. One thing we've done, right here, you can see a screenshot of one of the pages from our new website. We will have the ability to be able to change this so that if one of our sites calls and says, hey, we have a 45-minute line here, we can go to our website, we can put that there's a potential wait time there. This website is mobile-friendly, so if someone's ready to go vote, they can pull up where should I go to vote, and they'll be able to see where's not only the closest place for them, but the fastest place for them. All right. Thank you. Do you all have any questions?
That was awesome. Thank you.
I do have just a couple of quick comments, Judge, if I can. And Melinda mentioned this in her presentation, but I think it warrants just a little more visibility in terms of the cross-functional team for vote centers. I'm just going to read through just for the audience so everybody is aware of who participated in the advisory committee. So I have the Wesley Community Center, LULAC, Texas Coalition of Black Democrats, Disability Rights Texas, City of Amarillo, NAACP Poll Workers, Senator Sellers' Office, Highland Park ISD, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, League of Women Voters, Amarillo ISD, Precinct Judge, Emerald Republican Women, Potter County Attorney, River Road ISD, Amarillo Tea Party Patriots, Precinct Judge, the Huddle Democrats, Buschlin ISD, another election worker, and we have Commissioner Church and Commissioner Vaughn, and then our Potter County Republican Chair, Potter County IT, and Potter County Democratic Chair. So I just wanted to speak for a moment for the record as we get ready for the public comment. This is the advisory committee. And then Melinda also mentioned these 30 locations of vehicle entering intersections is what it is called. There's an actual study dated from 2011 and 2012 that looks at the vehicle traffic pattern. So what I do think is very significant about this shift is the attempt is to go where the people are, where the voters are. And some of the locations, one in particular, I'll speak to it, just Precinct 2, that is an early, potential early voting location, is the United Amigos at I-40 and Grand. So that ranks roughly 19 on the list of 30, and there's 31,000 vehicles that pass that intersection in a 24-hour period. So I just share that statistic because I think it is a very different shift about moving to where the pattern is and where maybe a non-traditional voter is. I thought that was important to just pause and highlight. So thank you for including it in your presentation.
Before you leave, I want to thank you so much for all the work that you've done putting this together. This has not, this has not been an easy thing to do. It's taken a long time and a lot of effort, and I want to first thank you for all the work that you've done. And I know we have a, you're on a kind of a time schedule here.
Yes, we're trying, well-
And tell, explain why we need to do this stuff.
Yes. This actual proposal is due in August, but right now, in terms of what the law says, the law says that six counties that have a population of over 100,000 are allowed to become new vote centers in any given election. Well, you know, we've got a good number of counties in Texas, and right now, this issue's becoming very, very hot. So there are a lot of people lining up to do this. We want to be in that sixth. The actual presentation, or the actual proposal, will be due in August, but we want to get it in either late this month or early June so we can be the first in line.
Anything else? Do I have any public comment?
Do we have anybody against this?
We've got one in the very back corner.
Well, come on up here and tell us about it, Stuart.
Good evening. If you will please give your name and your address.
Robert Goodrich.
In about three minutes.
I'm a property owner in Potter County, but I live in Randall. Does that prejudice my comments?
For you, yeah.
Well, my question has to do with, and I know it's specious in some respects, but there's an ignorant number of Baptist churches named. What about the other faiths? Do they not want to participate in offering their facilities for vote center?
Okay.
I'm just curious.
No, there wasn't, yeah. We have nothing against the Baptists or the Catholics. Yeah, yeah. No, and I know exactly what you're saying. We've been using a lot of the Baptist churches. It just so happens that geographically, our Baptists happen to be falling right where we need them to be. So yes, they were on the consideration list, and many of them there were wonderful, but this was just where we were planted.
And if I know Baptists, they'll have food.
My other concern is, is there any chance that this change in the way citizens vote might be an influence on removing some of the barriers that exist to getting people into polls to vote, represented by the new rules and regulations requiring people to have picture IDs and some other paraphernalia to get into the polls? Any chance that this will change that in any way?
Well, we certainly hope so, and certainly with all entities involved and with the help of the media, which is so proud to hear this afternoon, and the marketing that we're going to do, certainly that is our primary ambition to do that. And then with Melinda's work and I applaud her also for the studio's work that she's done, not only here in this area, but toward going to Lubbock and scaling that out and having all of those entities look at throughout the county. I think that they're a part in a pretty good position, and as mercy related, as the demographics and statistics fade as far as the high traffic area, that is the intent, is to get them where they are.
Mr. Goodrich, you've experienced these voting centers in Randall County. Did this change your attitude about voting or where?
Oh, absolutely. It's a lot of friendlier process. I think it's facilitating those citizens, and I'm all for it myself. My concern is that, it's just curious that there seems to be such a strong protective sort of sentiment emerging from the Supreme Court of this nation that allows corporations to vote, I mean, to put up money to influence voting without their identity having to be revealed. And I think that's just, it's, I don't think it's right. And somehow to allow enormously enriched corporations to, for all intents and purposes, buy elections without having to show a donor ID card is wrong. So I just want to make that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having us, me.
Is there anybody else? This man. I'm a male. Say your name and, okay.
Natalie. I live in 70108. I just had two little comments. I, this one, last election, not this election, because I work close to downtown, I have to get home, take care of my parents. I vote in Highland Park, and I don't go up there often enough, so, and I have opera rehearsals, so, you know, driving out to Highland Park, and I cannot find it. I've been there a couple of times, I'm using, you know, GPS, and I'm just totally out of nowhere, lost. And then when we talk about the vote centers, I mean, that would just, you know, I could vote in downtown, and then get home, or get voted somewhere new, in Pleasant Valley or something like that. And the other was Saturday during the elections, I had a meeting downtown at the library. And after I left, there was a gentleman just, I mean, came up really fast in a truck, and he stopped me and asked me, do you know where I can vote? Because the Santa Fe building was closed. And I had just done calls the night before, had my flyer, a poster, and left that at home because I was making phone calls. And so we went inside, the library, there was a flyer there, couldn't get in touch with anyone, the library was very kind of near. And so I just asked him where he lived, so we decided, you know, maybe I could give him a hand with everyone. And, but I did tell him that, you know, we will have vote centers, and you would be able to vote wherever you want to. I had a really good experience, and he thanked me. And I left feeling like I hadn't done my duty because I didn't, I didn't have that. I even tried to go online, and, you know, he was in a hurry, and I didn't, you know, do my duty to get, make sure that this guy voted. And he was young, he was a young man, so it's all right.
Okay. So you're all for it, then?
Oh, absolutely. And I'm a little advisory.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you, Malin.
Just, just so everybody knows, to be clear about, is that you still have to vote in your own county.
Yes, I do. I'm Potter County, but...
Right, right. No, but, you know, everybody's saying, well, you can vote anywhere you want. You still have to vote in your own county, yeah.
But, you know, I have the information for him to do this together.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I'm Parker B.B. I feel compelled to speak since Robert Goodrich and I graduated from the same class and have applied.
He's at the bar.
One year, that's it.
Nineteen fifty-three. I'm in favor of Malin's proposal. I think we need to make it as easy as possible for people to vote. I'll give you an example. The last election, our polling place was at Avondale School, which is about three miles from our house. But another polling place was De Zavala, and it was about a mile from our house. So given the choice, we would take the shortest one. But I think a lot of people need to be encouraged to vote. If we make it easy for them, then it will facilitate their voting.
Thank you, B.B., appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Ray Humphrey, and as an election judge, these elections, and precinct chair for three-twenty-three, there's not been one single election that I have overseen out there at River Road to where, especially on the presidential elections, like at seven o'clock, I usually got anywhere from one to three hundred people left over. And then I'd put them in the auditorium of the middle school there. Well, then they'd come out, a little bit of time, the voting machines come available, only to find out that they're in the wrong precinct. They should have voted in three-twenty-four or three-twenty-six, mostly three-twenty-six, I believe it is. They get those, those two polling places confused a lot, because a lot of times, depending on the election, they combine precincts. And you talk about upset voters, that now their vote don't count, you know, because they waited too long to tell me, or they didn't realize what precinct they were, because they might have been right close to the line, you know. But there's not one single election that I've overseen where somebody doesn't complain that five minutes before seven, you know, I go up there and say, are you sure you're in three-twenty-three? Well, I don't know, look at my card. No, you're in the wrong place. You need to go to Valley. They can't get there in five minutes. You know, so the vote centers, they have all day, they can be living across, they can be working across the street from a vote center. And I have to go across River Road, fifteen miles out, you know, and stuff. So I would encourage you to vote for this proposal. I think it'll make a lot, it'll, it'll cut down a whole lot on complaints during the wrong place. Especially in my precinct, if you're in the wrong place, you're definitely in the wrong county. So it would definitely cut down a lot of complaining that I hear at every election.
Thank you, Ms. Humphrey, appreciate it. I'm kind of disappointed. Am I have anybody that is against this?
They're disappointed, so they're down.
I just wanted to hear why they would be against it, that's all. Anybody?
Just for the record, I have several other letters here. I'm not going to read the letters, but I have one from Carolyn Leslie, saying she is for it. I have one from William Summer, he's in the audience tonight, he is for it. I have one from Sue Howard, she is in favor. And I have one from Liz Ruscone, from, you said it, from Amarillo Wesley Community Center, and then from Lila Callaway, all in favor. So if there's no one out there that's opposed, it makes me very happy.
The one feedback that I have received, Malin, is if there can be consolidation in the hours, sometimes it's hard to remember, this location is eight to two, but this one's eight to five. Especially as we start taking on other elections, citywide elections, that became very prevalent this particular cycle coming through, so I did want to pass that. I agree. And I've also expressed my kudos to Malin, and really each of you in the audience, as citizens and taxpayers and constituents of Potter County, this is really quite encouraging to just have anybody out there. So thank you for taking time to be here.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, sorry, it's not been easy. This was a process, and we thank you for everything you've done, Malin. You did an excellent job. So with that said, there's no opposition. So this will be part of the application that we're, that we're preparing, correct?
Yes.
So do we need to vote on this?
I don't think so.
Now, what I'd like to do is take the information we had from this public hearing, and I want to do the final, the final part of the proposal. Now, I'll have that read as it's ordered next Monday, so you guys can... Tuesday, next Tuesday. All right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
If that's all, then I, you are adjourned. Thank you for coming here, everybody.
Thank you, guys.